Call to order this regular meeting
Thanks.
of the City of Waynesboro Planning Commission, Tuesday, January 21st. Somebody like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely.
Nigel, alright.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we have, as some of you may have noticed, a new face with us here tonight. Ms. Keller is our newest planning commission here. I would like everybody to welcome her. You want to say who you are and make a few comments about how you came to be on the planning commission, or just?
You know, thank you so much, Will. I appreciate that. I want to thank Leslie and Allison. Thank you so much for the greeting last week. I'm really excited to support and serve our community. I've got a lot to learn, but I'm really going to rely on you, and I know that you guys can help me find my way. I know Jeff, so I'm really looking forward to working with you, getting to know you guys, and really trying to support every effort and desires of the community. Thank you, Will.
Excellent. Well, welcome. And we, yeah, we are all on this board always learning, I feel, so that's kind of the name of the game. With that, does anybody have a motion on the minutes? We need to talk about the November 19th minutes and the December 3rd.
I make a motion that we review and approve the minutes of the meetings held November 19th, 2024, and December 3rd, 2024.
I'll second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next on the agenda, oh, and we need to adopt the agenda. I skipped that step, sorry. Anybody have a motion on adoption of the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
Alright, all in favor of adoption of the agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Alright, now, sorry about that, we have presentation by our Director of Economic Development, Tourism here in the City of Waynesboro, Mr. Hitchens. We're moving fast here tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I have to admit, when Allison said, can you present to the planning commission on economic development, I said, sure, and then I said, what am I going to tell them? What can I possibly present to them? And I thought immediately, well, we have a bunch of economic development 101 presentations that I can dust off, or update, or tweak, or whatever, and said, no, these people are way beyond economic development 101. So, what I have tonight is kind of a mix of three things. Some statewide information on a document that our association has prepared for state general assembly members, kind of a big picture of what economic development means to the state. A parts of our strategic plan that Nigel has been involved with. And something that most of my teammates call corny, but I'm going to go with it anyway. So it's my four-legged stool of economic development. So I'm going to refer back to this in a minute. Jeff, some of this might sound familiar, so I'm going to rely on you for the audience participation part. So if we could just pass these. So what is economic development? From the state's perspective, the regional perspective, and the locality perspective, it is a revenue generator. All of the agencies in economic development, their main goal is to build revenue. And if you look at kind of the brown box on the front page where economic development is the answer, that's an average of what revenue has come to localities over the past, I think it's a 10-year window. So the state agency went back 10 years, looked at all the tax revenues, so property tax, machinery and tools, are things that are important to us, lumped it all together and did an average, so $7.7 million to a locality for, over that, per project. Look halfway down the page, you'll see what economic development has meant to Virginia and where all the projects have located. You'll see that most of the projects have come from expanding businesses, not the new shiny businesses. So we spend a lot of time, again, we, the statewide, we nurturing relationships, we'll talk about that more in a second, to build those relationships so that, hey, we need to expand, they're going to call us first, not North Carolina, or wherever they might call. And then lastly, on the back page, I'm not going to read everything to you, I know you can read what this says, but the little brown box halfway, on the bottom half, on the right-hand side, so state return on investments. So every dollar that the general assembly gives to VEDP, it's an eight-to-one return. And that return allows general assembly and our local elected officials to spend money on education and roads, and whatever that particular locality needs to do. So our goal is revenue generating. We've done a pretty good job of revenue generating in the past. And I think some of the things we'll talk about tonight, well, you'll see that we're kind of headed in that same direction, locality. I do want to make this interactive. So please feel free to stop me and ask a question as we go along. We're also, I mentioned our strategic plan, we're in the final stages of drafting the document. We presented an outline to our task force, which, again, Nigel is part of. It includes two EDA members, two city council members, two staff, city manager, and four at-large members, who have been helping guide staff along the way. Last summer, you may have recall, we did an online survey, and we also went out and met with a dozen groups, Rotary being one, which is why Jeff knows some of this, to ask them very specific questions about what they would like to see. So I thought I would give you the top five answers. The first one definitely falls into your bailiwick. The other ones I think you'd be interested in. So the, by far away, the number one, how can we make Waynesboro business question was downtown buildings. How do we improve them? How do we fix them up? How do we generate more revenue? Since that time, I did a little bit of study. I looked at Arch, Federal Church, and Broad, that square, calculated how many first-floor square feet we have, how many were full, how many were vacant. This came, this number was in September, so it's changed a little bit, but not quite. We have a, I think it was a 35% vacancy in that square, but four buildings add up to 30% vacancy. So four big buildings are the big, big piece, no pun intended, of how vacancy in our downtown area. Second item was, hey, Northwood Crumman was pretty good, we'd like another one of those, tourism. We need to increase our activity in tourism, we need more commercial space, and our Grow Waynesboro Entrepreneur Program is pretty good. We just need to get it out more, do more with it, and help train up more entrepreneurs. So, my stool. The top. We've been to a spa, this is kind of the spa blue, everybody's nice, everybody's fine. So this is prosperity, that's our goal. Our mission statement, the short version of our mission statement, is to build community prosperity. So community prosperity means to turn things to different people. For me and Mr. Hamp and Mayor Lee, it means generating revenue for the city to do other things. But other folks maybe like the greenway, you know, that's their version of prosperity, or family activities, or being able to shop at major stores, or having a choice of shopping at major stores, or coming downtown to shop at mom and pop. So prosperity means different things to different people, but that's our overall goal, is building that community prosperity. The blue stands for bring in new revenue. So that is trying to attract new business, trying to increase our tourism activity, and working with our regional partnerships to do both of those things. And one of the five key goals that the task force approved is attract new investment, jobs, talent, and visitors. So how can we get more outside revenue inside of the city, not just trading dollars amongst ourselves? We want new revenue to come in. The green. Okay, any guesses? Green, spring's coming?
Money?
Money? Well, yeah, everything's money. Green is grow our existing businesses. Again, we help with expansions. We try to build relationships with our companies. So again, hey, we need to expand, we need to buy new pieces of equipment, can you help us? I need to do X, Y, and Z, can you help us? So that, we do that a lot, is try to help businesses grow, expand here, provide their resources. We are not the expert in everything, but we know who the experts are. And if someone calls us with something, we can refer them to the state, or another locality, or, not a locality, another local resource person for them. So our second major goal of our new strategic plan will be provide local business support. So build up that relationship, put more tools in our toolbox to help them grow and expand. Yellow. Guesses, this one's a little weird, so.
Prosperity.
Prosperity, huh? So yellow, sunshine, optimism, what entrepreneurs are all about. So, this is build up our entrepreneur base. We have a local loan program, it's a $15,000 max loan, usually 3%, three years. Easy, much easier to get than a bank, but it's something that we have to offer. We have different zones throughout the city. There's an enterprise zone, there's a technology zone, a tourism zone. Each of them kind of overlay one another, but if you have a certain type of NICS code and located one of those businesses, one of those zones, there might be tax advantages, tax incentives for you. Again, access to resources, we're not the expert in everything, but we know who the experts are, and support and training. So beginning next month, we have a Grow Waynesboro Wednesday. So one day, one Wednesday of the month, there'll be someone from the chamber there, there'll be someone from SCORE there, there'll be someone from the Small Business Development Center there, and then the fourth Wednesday of the month, it will rotate. So if you have a small business, you need a question, you want to talk to the chamber, third Wednesday of every month, come to our office and talk to the chamber. Which leads us to the third of the five goals, is deliver entrepreneurship guidance. So we're well into that, and we try to provide the right resources and the right people for that. So lastly, orange stands for under construction, or miscellaneous. Many things fall into this, real estate, we work with, on our own industrial park, trying to get it ready to go, work with other builders, property owners, developers, and try to help them find the right resources that they might need to get their property up and running. We maintain a database of all the property that's out there. We do marketing, both on the tourism side and on the business side, selling our quality of place. And lastly, do branding and wayfinding, and just try to help the visitors that are here. So this property has two goals associated with it. Prepare opportunities for future investment, as primarily our industrial park. And the second one is communicate attributes, achievements, and opportunities. So we have, on a tourism side, very heavy into social media and partnerships, marketing the area, because quite frankly, not many people know where Waynesboro is, but they know where the Shenandoah Valley is. And we also do a little bit of marketing on our industrial park, although it's not quite ready yet, so we're not doing a lot of marketing in that. Five, five websites, four newsletters, a number of different ways to try to get our message out to a bunch of different audiences. So, that's my stool of economic development. Did that spur any questions? Spawn?
I have a question. Actually, I have two. The first question, you talked about the vacancies and that being a concern downtown. Are, is the EDA, do you have an ongoing dialogue with these building owners and trying to understand what their plans are, if they have any?
As much as we can, and the plan is, they don't really have one, it's a couple of them. Some of them, there are plans, and they're just stuck in neutral, for whatever reason. Others don't have any plans, and we just can't seem to move them off center.
Okay. And the second question, your entrepreneurship and EDA kind of sponsored for small businesses, what would you say your success rate is on, with that?
This last, the last version we did was 100%. We gave out $51,000 to four businesses. They're all still operating, they're all still growing. Several of them have put in a lot of private, of their own private investment into their business, so definitely 100% over this last one. Over the life of four or five entrepreneur-type contests that we've done, might be, I'm guessing, 60, 70%, something like that.
Greg, several years ago, you shared with me a survey that you'd been doing annually to outside businesses, and what are the top things that they're looking for when they're moving into a community? And I found some of those targets, and you tracking that over a period of time, very helpful and enlightening. Though I haven't seen it in the last two years, I would assume, you know, a solid workforce is going to be one of those primaries still. I found that one of the intangibles on your list was quality of life that they were looking for. I guess I would go on the inverse of that with this question, is when you talk with the businesses that don't choose Waynesboro, what are the impediments, you know, what are the things that have kept them from coming in here? And if we gave you a magic wand today and said, what are some things that we can do in this comprehensive plan as a community to remove some of those impediments, what would you do? So I guess a two-part question. What are some of the impediments you see to people choosing Waynesboro, and what can we do to remove that?
Okay. I'll go one step further. We don't get a lot of look, so as you might imagine, 20 years ago, nobody had any information about anything. They had to come to you to ask questions. They don't have to do that anymore. We are now on the, they don't come to us until we're on the shortlist. And you're right, real estate and workforce, one of those two things is the first question that they ask. They assume you have internet now, they assume you have electricity and water, and probably quality of life. And I'll go back to answer your question, but you're right, again, 20 years ago, quality of life wasn't even on the survey. And now it's a very important consideration for the workforce. Anyway, back to your question, so we don't get a lot of look, so we're not going to be headquarters location. International companies want to be within hour of a direct international airport, so we're not going to get those. Anybody who needs a large workforce, we're not going to get those. Large by thousands, I mean, we're not going to get those. What it comes down to, we typically, we, if it's a large company like that, where the state is a partner in that, this company is looking at multiple states, probably also in the southeast. At that point, assuming there's a ready site, it's reasonably, all the things they're looking for, if you're apples to apples, it will probably come down to state incentives. Virginia is not a heavy incentive state, and we know that. It's probably what it's going to come down to, and we as a locality typically will, if it's a Commonwealth Opportunity Fund, we have to match the state, but we typically would not go above what the state offers.
Any, the magic wand side of things, if we could do something that would make your job easier?
Having a ready site is number one, I think, these days. That's why we landed Northwood Crumman. We would not even been in the game if we did not have a ready site. And by ready, I mean all the due diligence done. Grading would be a bonus, but people understand grading, it takes a while. Once you, my opinion, once you grade a site, you've determined the site, which is why we don't want to do that at Nature's Crossing, or at Waynesboro Commerce Park, we want, we have 20 acres. We'd like to say all 20 acres, and then you can grade it however you want to grade it. Engineering, infrastructure, utilities, road, all that stuff done, or planned to be done within 12 to 18 months, which is where we're headed. But that is the number one thing. People are not even looking at sites that will have any risk associated with them. So if it's not zoned right, no offense, but coming to a planning commission to get rezoned is a risk. You don't know how that's going to happen. So have everything done, as much as possible done, before they even come look at it.
And how that kind of would translate with the comprehensive plan is when we are looking at a future land use map and going out to the community and kind of saying, alright, here's all of Waynesboro, here's undeveloped land, here's land that might be possible for redevelopment, but kind of, you know, looking at, okay, how much available industrial land do we have, inside city-owned, outside city-owned, and kind of, you know, making those decisions as we kind of tinker with the future land use map as a way that we could help, help in that regard.
Is there a specific place or deficit or example that springs to mind where we have a zoning problem, or zoning impediment in the city?
Generally not. Two examples, we were looking for 10-acre highway business site not too long ago, and we had two. We might only have one now, so that immediately eliminated this particular client. Industrial land, once, so the city owns 205-ish acres of industrial land. The rest of the sort of available industrial land is in basic city in a flood zone. So we'll have zero industrial land once we fill the two industrial parks.
And that's also, you know, it's important to keep in mind, something that I hope we'll be doing with the comprehensive plan, is kind of looking at, alright, what is already developed industrial land that's being underutilized, and maybe ripe for redevelopment, that we can kind of block that also out as, you know, kind of keeping in mind, here's a possibility, and then maybe there are some incentives or things that get placed on those also.
My question would be, out of those surveys that are conducted, has there been a consistency in the industry type that has sought to make Waynesboro like a home? And if you are able to have those numbers, what do we do as a city to try to recruit some of those industries that are geared more, to a more diverse workforce?
So we are targeting manufacturing firms, and in particular in Nature's Crossing, rail-served manufacturing firms. Based on our research and the state's research, there are very few 40-acre rail-served sites in the mid-Atlantic region. So we think, once we are fully ready to go to market, we will have a very unique opportunity. Comes with manufacturing, comes with all levels of skill. Transportation will be a question at some point, for all levels of skill, all shifts. Childcare will be a question at some point for the same thing. Housing, we have, I'm not going to, you guys are doing a great job with housing, but it's, we've got a pretty good, pretty good mix of housing opportunities within two miles of our industrial park, and all the amenities that go along with that. So housing, childcare, and transportation will be issues that we'll need to address as we get more prosperous.
Are there anything other than manufacturing that Waynesboro would seek to try to recruit?
At this point, no. City council has placed covenants on the two industrial parks that are manufacturing or technology-based. We trotted down the data center road for a while, and we just do not have the electric infrastructure in place near our industrial parks to make that happen. So we're focused solely on manufacturing. If you look at the Shenandoah Valley region, number of percent of workforce doing a certain type of skill, we are well above national average on manufacturing, I think it's 12 or 13% now. Our heritage is manufacturing. Food and beverage is a big chunk of that. We're not necessarily, our two industrial parks are not necessarily set up for big food and beverage because of the utility infrastructure that we'll have in place, but manufacturing is our key.
So the rationale behind that, if you didn't know, is that previous and current council felt that putting, just say, 20,000 square foot building out there as a warehouse with one or two employees is not what we're trying to do. So that's why we're driving at the manufacturing, so we're trying to generate, while we're trying to generate revenue, we're trying to generate jobs. So that's, that's the rationale or logic behind it.
Absolutely, and that was a big house, big help in 2021, where everyone was just buying land speculatively to build logistics-supported things, and we're not interested in that.
Are there, talking about infrastructure and bringing in manufacturing, I walk the greenway a lot, and there are a lot of dilapidated buildings on the Dupont site. Is anything being done to revamp those, attract more? I know Ryder built their own Delphine a year or two ago, and seemed to be prospering. But the Mohawk building that's behind it seems to be empty. Is there anything on the horizon to maybe entice companies to rejuvenate that area?
I'll come back to Dupont in a second.
Okay.
All of, all of our former manufacturing facilities, so Mohawk, General Electric, Crompton Mills.
Genacom?
Genacom, Genacom, yeah. They're all full, 75% full of multi-tenant people. So the owners of those buildings have done a pretty good job filling them with something. Including, I think the Mohawk building at one time was 100% full. And then they tore down the part that was unuseful, administration and building, and 14-foot manufacturing, and built the Ryder thing, which is very forward-thinking building owner at that point, because he built that speculatively. The Dupont property is the Dupont property. And I'm not sure much is ever going to happen behind those gates.
Greg, can you elaborate on the transportation concerns?
So we, for workers who don't have a car, so what can we, how can we get, can we change the bus route to go past there? Can the bus route go second shift? Those kinds of questions.
Okay, so primarily public transportation?
Public transportation, yeah, sorry. Yep. Yeah, car-wise, it's in a very good spot. New road, two interstate, two interstate access points, but, yeah, I should have said public transportation.
You referenced tourism a couple times. Is that part of the, I think when you had said you went out and talked to the different groups, there was an expectation of your office doing some tourism. I'm gonna hop on the soapbox for a second, so Kenny or Leslie, y'all can tell me later after the meeting, don't do that, Fife. And I'm happy to accept that. I would love to see us somehow get into Richmond and make Waynesboro the fly-fishing capital of the state of Virginia, and put a sign on the entrance and of the state of Virginia and put a sign on the entrance into 64, you know, as people are coming in. So it's just something that grabs people's attention because we do, with the work that we've done with the dams and with the fly fishing, getting people in and filling up our hotels, people in our restaurants, I feel like we could push that a little bit harder. It's been pushed brilliantly up to this point. I think we've made ourselves informally, but can we formally go down and see folks in Richmond to literally get that tag, we're the fly-fishing capital of Wayne'sboro, so we can put a sign up with VDOT literally on there? I don't know if that's even possible revival or a pipe dream, but I feel like that would get more bodies coming off 64 and saying, well, let's check this out. Fly fishing capital of the state of Virginia, let's go! Does that fall under your?
It does. We explore all different opportunities to do different things. That's not one of them yet, but we.
If you need somebody, go down Richmond, meet Urban Nash, go around there with some poles, and we'll talk to some people.
So it's one of those things that's kind of hard to measure. So we, you know, every time I go across the bridge, you see somebody out there fly fishing, but how much food do they buy? Do they spend overnight? How much, what kind of revenue can you attach to that? So I'm not sure it might be our number one thing, but again, we're exploring all different types of opportunities for outdoor recreation, ways to get more people in to leave their money here and go home. Absolutely.
So how do you measure the level of tourism that you'd like to see? And along with that, what is the city's long-term preferred source of tourism, other than the outdoor recreation, which I know is a large part? But within outdoor recreation, I could see a lot of different things, especially like with fishing, Greenway, the Appalachian Trail, things of that nature.
Yep. We rely on the state to measure economic impact, and they come out every year in the summertime, I think, with the economic impact from the previous year. Look at a 10 or 15-year chart, it's going up every year, economic impact. So we are trying to do things that will require people to stay in the city longer. And if they stay in the city longer, they need to buy food and they need to stay overnight. So that's how we get our revenue from visitors coming in. And we work with our partners in Stanton and Augusta County, because again, bigger, bigger dot on the map gets more people involved. Neither one of the three of us have enough to do by themselves. So, you know, for example, go to the Frontier Culture Museum on a half a day, come to the Virginia Museum of Natural History for half a day. Oops, I gotta spend the night, and then I can, but I can do something else tomorrow. Go to Appalachian Trail. And then all the pieces that different people are doing, Parks and Rec, streetscapes, all those pieces add to that. So as we build more Greenway trails, now all of a sudden, we need a bike rental place because there's enough Greenway trail to rent a bike. The water's improved, the river's improved, and now all of a sudden you need someone to rent kayaks. I know you've tried, you did some of that. So as, as the pieces grow and add, we can add more things to do. A trail that, you know, the Blue Ridge Tunnel Trail, that connects further into Nelson County, then all of a sudden we have a trail going from Wayne'sboro to Charlottesville, and that becomes a bigger bike trail or hiking and walking trail. So all the pieces come together, and that's what we're trying to do, Nigel, to ask you, answer your question, is get people to come here, get people to come here and stay longer.
Greg, it's on the museum that's coming to town, that's going to be a huge attraction, I think, to get people here. And how about the, on top of the mountain? How's the city working with that as far as getting, keeping that moving and whatnot?
Yeah, we're very, very much partners with Augusta County. They've received two grants that we've been supported of to do master plan and infrastructure planning to get that run. So they have a, have a plan now. Water and Sewer is going to be their biggest nut to crack. The water and sewer, so the water that was up there came out of a water tank, which is not viable anymore, and it was a, well past my knowledge, but an outdoor lagoon septic tank system, which is no longer viable. So again, as I understand it, they can connect to the city water and sewer for a price, they can build their own water and sewer plant, they can do some sort of outside water and sewer system, and they know what all those numbers are. They've, they're in the process, I'm not sure. Are they developing a master plan or is it done? The latest grant, I don't know. They're in the process of doing a master plan. So we're, we're in contact with them, both, both of us are working with them, trying to figure out something to do up there. That's a long way away.
What is the museum update?
So the, not in this year's budget, the museum was asked to complete all the detailed So in fiscal '23, they were appropriated a million and a half dollars. They got half of that in the cash, half of it, so hired an architect and exhibit company, did the drawings and the plans that you probably have seen along the way, ran out of the half of the cash, and then it took them a year to get the other half of the cash. So they're working through that now, doing the actual detail plans, more detailed plans, going through the state review process. So as you might imagine, the architect says that needs to be stainless steel, the state goes, nope, that needs to be shiny aluminum, and meshing all those things together. And that, we hope to have done, they hope to have done in springtime this year. So they've spent other million and a half dollars, have all the building designs in place and rough idea of the exhibits. Then we will, their plan is to push hard on the administration to include the $40 million in, in the budget a year, in the governor's budget a year from now or 11 months from now. So we can go through the budget process. So if that happens, then, you know, money's available, what, July 1st, '27, which is not really, doesn't really happen on July 1st, and then it takes two years, so we're three years away at least.
What's the, at one time, correct me if I misunderstood, at one time the city was having to come out of pocket for some portion of that. Is that still true for the, for the construction and the funding or some, some part of it? I can't remember exactly what the detail.
Yeah, the city council has pledged a million dollars in, in kind or in cash. So the biggest chunk of that million dollars is the piece of property that it's sitting on.
And things had been quiet for a while, but just last week, the engineering firm reached out to us about parking and more design stuff, so that was positive.
Yep. Part of the detailed design.
As part of economic development, you, you'd said a little bit ago, Greg, that Wayne'sboro, Stanton, and Augusta County were kind of in cooperation. I won't say partnerships, but cooperation. Has Wayne'sboro ever thought about piggybacking onto some of the events like Stanton has, like the Magic Weekend? Because it's 25,000 people in the city of Stanton that weekend. And doing something similar or, or in conjunction with that to bring people here?
Yeah, we try, we try not to, we try hard not to compete with them. We have done some things in conjunction with them. Nothing like exactly what they do, but they, so the Beerworks Trail is probably the best example of the cooperation, and that has now gone, it's now all, all of the Shenandoah Valley, I think. So it started out at six or seven breweries, now it's 17 or 18 breweries amongst all the economic and tourism partners along the Shenandoah Valley. I'm not going to do well on statistics, but I think we're approaching, I think we're approaching 10,000 t-shirts in five or six years. I mean, it's the number, we happen to do the fulfillment in our office, which was my one mistake. I said, sure, we'll do the fulfillment. It's just amazing. So you got to go to six or eight, we started out with six, now I think it's eight breweries, you get stamped, mailed in, get a t-shirt. People are crazy over the t-shirts.
What's on the shirt?
It just says, drink in, drink in the Shenandoah Valley on the front, and a list of breweries on the back. Changes color every year, so it's a collectible. And I think we have many repeat.
The four colors of the stool.
More color, yeah, they didn't like my stools. Cool mint is the new color this year, so. Well, thank you. I've taken up way more time than Allison said I could have, so.
Thank you so much for educating us once again.
Yeah, and I'd love to talk to you more. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, we have staff presentations.
Okay, so tonight I'm going to give a brief presentation of the 2024 Planning Commission Annual Report, which provides a summary of what you all in the planning department has done over the course of the past year. As far as development goes, it was a pretty busy year. Went over five zoning text amendments that included the four amendments to our code that staff brought towards the beginning of 2024, the townhouse parking, the parking lot landscaping, the correction to the temporary special events ordinance, and then also the clarifications of the accessory buildings and structures. And then also the biggest one, the cottage court ordinance. Had two, two rezonings, one at 300 North Augusta, and then also the Smith Farm PUD. Four conditional use permits, and then four preliminary plats, which included two at Creekwood, one at the Rossar Avenue Amendment, and then the Hopeman and King. And this is a graph that shows the applications that have been reviewed by the Planning Commission over the previous, or the course of the last 10 years. And broadly, this, this graph looks at conditional use permits, rezonings, and preliminary plats. And broadly, the application numbers have kind of stayed steady from year to year. They range on what's more popular in a given year, but broadly speaking, it has sort of state level. And here's a quick look at where in the city those applications took place in regards to the conditional use permits, rezonings, and preliminary plats, mostly on the eastern side and the western side of the cities. As far as residential construction goes, it did remain strong throughout 2024. You had construction start at the Summit Towns and Rossar Avenue subdivisions, and then you also had construction continuing at some of the older ones, including Anna Marie. Final stages of Evershire are still under construction, Ivy Commons, of course, also Creekwood. And then Kira Heights also actually, I believe, got underway last year as well. And then along with three new preliminary plats that were approved, which is the two at Creekwood, the Creekwood Village Phase 3, which is the townhouse section behind Martins, Creekwood at Bookerdale, and then the Hopeman and King subdivision. As far as residential building permits go, they have remained fairly consistent since 2019. 2024 did see a slight decrease from 2023, with 138 permits issued for single-family homes and only one multifamily home, or multifamily building permit issued over the course of the past year. So there was a slight drop in those numbers in 2024. As far as other planning projects go, the two big streetscape projects are still underway, the West Main and Broad Street projects. These were both funded with the 2020 round of Smart Scale. So the West Main project, which runs from Hopeman Parkway to Ludewitt Boulevard, is going to replace that center turn lane with a median and also add continuous sidewalk on one side. It is still in the engineering phase, and a second public hearing or a public meeting was held for revised design plans back in October, so that's still progressing through. As far as the Broad Street project goes, that's running from the intersection of Broad, Rossar, and Main, along Broad Street to its intersection with East Main. And it's basically a very similar project, it's going to replace that center median and also add several pedestrian improvements, sidewalk crossings along that corridor. And it is also still in the engineering phase with its first public meeting held in August. So it's a little behind the West Main project, but still progressing with the design plans. The 14th Street project finally got underway this year. It was funded with what was formerly called open container funds, it's now called transportation alternatives. It was funded back in 2016. It will be providing a continuous sidewalk along 14th Street from Wayne Avenue at the library all the way to Magnolia Avenue. It will upgrade the pedestrian crossing at Wayne, and it'll also provide curb ramps throughout all the intersections along 14th Street, fill in missing sections of sidewalk. Overall, good project. Construction started this fall, and it's expected to conclude in the spring, so it's, it's well underway.
Yeah, we had a, actually had a construction update meeting today, so obviously with the weather, they're moving a little slower right now, but are hopeful that next week when the temperatures go up, they'll be laying more concrete.
Virginia Highway Safety Program, H-SIP, they, VDOT did open that grant round again this year, and the city did put in another application, this time for 20 intersections, and focusing entirely on pedestrian improvements. We were told that it will be more competitive this year, so we'll see what, what manages to get funded, but we did put in for 20. We did find out in the fall that our 2023 applications had been funded, and so that was a group of three applications that included unsigned intersection improvements, so things like signage and stop bars, 25 intersections that will have pedestrian improvements, so curb ramps and high-vis crosswalks, rapid flashing beacons, that sort of thing. And then also curve, better curve delineation of that curve out by Basic City Brewery right And then also, and then finally, I believe this is final, the Smart Scale Round Six opened this, in the spring of 2024, and the city did put in for three projects in this round. The Ludewitt pedestrian project, which provides sidewalk, would fill in the missing, missing portions of sidewalk along Ludewitt Boulevard. Wayne'sboro Transit Access Project, which would provide bus stop improvements for a number of the city's bus stops across the city. And then finally, again, for the Blue Ridge Tunnel Connector Trail, that would connect the east side of Wayne'sboro with the Croze Tunnel. The city will be notified late this spring if we are officially awarded funding. Staff found out last week that the VDOT staff had recommended the Transit Access Project be recommended for funding, but we do not know for sure if it has been or not.
It's typical, so it's called like the recommended funding scenario. It's typical that that is what's funded, that there's not a lot of tinkering after the fact, because what Smart Scale is, is essentially trying to take kind of politics out of transportation improvements, and it's essentially metrics that the project is based on and judged upon, and they vary from Northern Virginia to our area, whether congestion rates higher or economic development rates higher. So likely, the funding, the recommended funding scenario will be what happens, and so that unfortunately is that we didn't get the Ludewitt pedestrian project or the Blue Ridge Tunnel, but the Wayne'sboro Transit Access Project is recommended for funding. I can't remember the specific amount. I want to say $2 million is coming to mind, was the ask for the Wayne'sboro Transit Access Project, and I want to say it improves six, six or seven bus stops in the city to kind of provide, you know, a shelter, an actual shelter, enclosed area where someone can sit for the bus, and then upgraded, you know, minimal sidewalk areas to create connections or ADA ramps.
And yeah, those applications are scored by those five metrics, the safety, congestion, mitigation, accessibility, economic development, and environmental quality.
Allison, I have a question.
Sure.
Is there a way for the current bus stops to be maybe better identifiable? Because like I know there's a couple of Florence, and I think there's one on Port Republic in particular that come to mind, that have the signs, of course, but if you're not paying attention or if you just don't know, you would never know that those signs were there. I didn't know if there was like maybe lighting that could be placed where the signs are on the pole, to kind of identify, like, hey, this is a stop.
So I, I will say that there is a kind of regional body that sets a technical advisory body. So I will say that there is a kind of regional body that sets a technical advisory body that reviews kind of the placement of new bus stops, and Allison and I actually both sat on that advisory committee. There's also someone who, you know, regularly rides the system that serves. There's representatives from Augusta County and Stanton. But in terms of, you know, they place those signs, and that body approves where a new stop may be located. So I know Stanton has come recently. They have a couple more apartment projects that they've approved, and the bus stop wasn't on their schedule, so they've come and asked kind of the regional body to approve a stop there. But as far as the quality of the stop, you know, does it have lighting? Does it have a structure, a covered shelter? That, in my understanding, is the responsibility of the locality. And so this grant application, you know, in trying to be competitive, rather than tackle every single bus stop within the city that we didn't think would get us funding, we kind of, I don't know if pilot's the right word, but essentially looked at the six or seven bus stops within the city that are most utilized, that the ridership numbers are the highest, and that's where we made application for. We could certainly, you know, the Smart Scale is every two years, so you could always put in a future grant to do some additional ones. And then the other possibility is the Department of Rail and Public Transportation also puts out a grant. It does require a local match, whereas Smart Scale does not. But that's another avenue that the city could use to apply for upgrades. But I guess just as far as any, those improvements, it would be a locality funding decision or grant to upgrade them.
No, and I'm not sure how much it costs to put in standing shelter with additional upgrades at those stops. But with some of the lesser used stops, I imagine that there might not necessarily have to be an immediate use case for a standing structure. And I'm not sure, but I'd imagine maybe a light isn't as expensive as a standing structure like, or just like a small beacon just to identify the driver and the passengers. I'm not sure what that price is that could possibly be worked in to the current Smart Scale funding.
Yeah, so the stops, if I'm remembering right, for this grant funding application were the stop outside of the middle school that'll have. There's only, yeah, we've already chosen with the application what those six stops are.
Those things have to be used specifically.
For those stops, yes, yeah.
Well, that kind of answers that.
But it's outside of the middle school, over near the food line, behind the DMV.
Ludewitt.
Ludewitt, across from like where the new fire station's going to be, kind of in that vicinity. One is at Kroger. And then one is at the, what's the name of that gas station on East Main, like Delphine and?
Speedway.
The Speedway, an improved stop there, I think, does that cover all of them? Oh, and then an improved one at Walmart.
In the parking lot.
And where the existing one is in the parking lot, but trying to upgrade that one. So I think that covers the six.
Allison, on the applications, three applications submitted, the slide that you, that was up there already. You said that the one in the middle was the only one that was approved and the one above and below the Blue Ridge Connector Trail?
Oh, the Smart Scale.
On that, the, right there. So is that the way, wait another two years now?
So we've, yeah, we've put in for the Blue Ridge Tunnel Connector Trail. I think this is the third time we've put in for Smart Scale. And then we've also put in a federal RACE grant twice, or it used to be Build, Build Grant. We put in for that once, and then RACE two or three. So we have, we continue to look for grants for that project, but writing on the wall is kind of like Smart Scale isn't, isn't the way to go for that one. But yes, Smart Scale is only every two years that you can make application for that. You know, the, we have been awarded EFLAP grant funding that's doing some of those kind of engineering. But yes, Smart Scale is every two years, and that's the, that does not require a match. And that is the process by which we, as a locality, can only put in four transportation applications. They're very detailed applications. You have to have studies behind them. Like if you were going to put in a new road alignment, you have to have a very detailed engineering study, very detailed cost estimates. You make application, and then they get rated by those metrics across the state. And then you can see where, you know, the Stanton District, which is the VDOT District, we're a part of, you know, what projects got approved for them and all over Virginia, but that's the system.
Are we looking at other sources then for that trail?
Yes, I think we're always looking to fund. I think the price tag on that project is, I want to say like 12 million or 12 to 15 million. That's been, and I'm not even sure that's a great estimate. It's just kind of a, based on conceptual planning. You know, we, I think we put in for the RACE federal grant. We didn't do it this past year. I can't remember. I think February is when it's due. But can certainly, you know, keep looking towards, towards that. It doesn't seem like Smart Scale is going to be the, the funding mechanism for it.
Is there a drawing or layout of where this trail is going?
We have a conceptual, yeah.
Is it, is the railroad crossing what keeps getting it turned down? Where we got to go either under or over the railroad track?
You know, I don't, I wouldn't say it's what gets it turned down, because like Smart Scale, they're looking at very specific metrics. So I'm not sure it'll, it ever will fit the Smart Scale model. But the, like the RACE grant that we put in for, I think some of the feedback we've gotten when we've done a debrief with them is like, hey, we think this is a great project, but they want to see where it's move, you know, it's more, it's a little bit more of a tourism project rather than a transportation project. And especially with the RACE grant, they want to see that individuals, disadvantaged communities are being able to be moved, not just for recreation, but to get to employment. And it's been a little bit harder of something for us to demonstrate with this alignment. So it's just, I think finding the right, the right grant, keep working towards that.
Where is the East Main corridor fall in with all of this? Did we approve?
So that's a, that's a Smart Scale project that was funded in, I guess, the 2020 round also, or maybe the 2022 round. So it is in, we, the city has contracted with Ranker Design Associates, engineering firm, and it, that project is in the design stages. So probably not constructed until, thinking you won't see construction until 2027, 2028.
Yeah, well, that's, I think that was the date that was given when we approved it way, way back.
But it is in the design stages, so I think by the end of the month, the city will have 30% plans to review, and then they'll move to their 60%, their 100%. We'll have some additional community meetings and outreach, but yes, it's in the design stage.
Just out of curiosity, is the design going to put the sign back across the road that used to say, "Welcome to Waynesboro"?
So that project, we also, when we engaged our engineer, the amount that the city asked for is not enough to cover the entirety of that project. So something that we will be doing is going out for another bucket of funding called revenue share, which is a 50-50. The locality pays 50%, the state pays 50%. So we have to kind of get additional funding to even finalize that project. But I don't think the sign is a component of the project. It would be, you know, something we could pursue after, but this is more a median, streetscape, kind of beautification, access management, eliminating entrances, safety project.
Now, when we reviewed that all those years ago, they were going to put an eight-foot-wide multi-use path on one side of the road down the street. I don't know if that made it into design, but at the time, you know, I suggested why not bury the utilities while you're digging? I mean, you ain't got to go but two more feet deep and put them in a chase and a raceway under that walk. And then you don't have power lines hanging up there that are susceptible to power outage.
Yeah, I mean, with that, we have, as a locality, we have very little control over the public utility. So they do work with us if we need poles moved for projects. They've worked with us kind of at, on, on their dime, moving the poles. But, you know, I've had some calls with our legal counsel and kind of other localities, and I do not think, I know that this project has not planned to fund undergrounding of utilities.
I was just curious if that got thrown in along the way, because it's been a long time since that project was discussed.
Yeah, yeah.
One place that I have absolutely no data to support, but anecdotally observed and have a bully pulpit to share with you at this very moment, that I might suggest we might look at Smart Scale in the future, it's Rossar Avenue, the pedestrian traffic, particularly with the new development that's going on along there. I notice constant pedestrian traffic, and with the new development, I know we're going to have sidewalk part of the way on one side with, on the, let me think about this, west side of Rossar. But I know with some of the private homes and stuff down there at the corner, maybe, and there's much more space on the other side if we need a pedestrian crossing. Anyway, it's just something to put on your radar to maybe think about if it's not already, because it's something that I certainly see regularly.
Yeah, so Smart Scale is an option for those types of projects. There's also something called Transportation Alternatives. The, you know, the great thing about Smart Scale is it's 100% not locality funds. The Transportation Alternatives is 80-20, so the locality does have to put in 20% of the total cost. Those are also every two years, and they're on opposite years of Smart Scale. So yes, all those things are things we keep in mind, and things that, as we work on our comprehensive plan and work on the transportation section of our comprehensive plan, you know, hopefully we'll have more marching orders in the future of, okay, these are the projects that we want to tick off the list, because a lot of the ones that were in last comprehensive plan have thankfully been funded and are well on their way to being constructed, so, yeah.
Now, the 14th Street sidewalk, that's a continuation of the Greenway, correct?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Okay.
Kudos to Keller Year. I just joined the commission three months ago, and I read this report and went, that sounds like a busy year. One thing I was looking for in the report, didn't see out of continuation, just curious for an update, the roundabout on Rossar and 13th, where are we with that?
So that is a public works managed project. It is in, I want to say 60 or maybe close to 100% design plans. Timmons Group is the engineer that's working on that. So I'm thinking you'd see construction 2026, maybe 2027, but that one's moving right along, yeah.
Are they doing the design work for the other two proposed traffic circles? The one at Burger King and the other one down here at Speedway?
The one at Burger King is a, so with Smart Scale, you can either locally administer these projects, or they can be administered by VDOT. So like, West Main and the Broad Street project are being administered by VDOT. So the city is definitely involved, but we're not the project manager and, and working constantly with kind of the design engineer. The East Main Street Streetscape, we are locally administering, and that falls within my department. The other roundabout that you just mentioned, that's Public Works administered. So the one at Burger King is VDOT administered. It's, I guess, two-year, we just applied for that in the last round of Smart Scale. So typically, when you apply for a Smart Scale project, so 2024, we get this funding for the bus stops, you won't see it constructed for six years. So that's just something to keep in mind. So 2022 is when we applied for the one at Burger King. So that's, you know.
No, two, three years away.
Before we're even designing, but that's VDOT administered. The roundabout that's proposed at East Main and Delphine, I think is going to transition to a signal replacement, because once they started looking at, you know, the numbers were dropping, traffic numbers were dropping, and so it made sense to put a roundabout in there of a certain size. But then now, projecting out the traffic numbers, they're realizing you'd have to put a much larger roundabout in there, and then the right-of-way implications and all that, so that will likely transition to a signal replacement project. And Public Works is also managing that.
One comment I'll make about sidewalks. I think they're great, and I agree, we need more of them. But with this recent weather, I've, even in the areas where there are sidewalks, either the city's not keeping them clean, or the residents are not cleaning the sidewalks off, and you got people walking down the street. And they're out on the road because of the snow against the side, against the sidewalk. It's sad. I mean, I think the city needs to look into enforcing, residents, clean your sidewalks, and also the city has to do a better job of cleaning the city sidewalks. So I've seen a lot of that, you can see it now, because the snow's not going anywhere. So I just want to mention.
Well, as somebody that was in charge of a lot of snow removal for many years at university, the city, not this city, will cover you up after you clean it. So I was responsible for the sidewalk all the way around Scott Stadium, all the way to the hospital down JPA. Of course, that's a wide road, and when the city comes through, they come through four trucks at a time, and they bury it. So when we finally got snow blowers and little mini skids, I was, I had five blowers and two mini skids at my disposal. I put UVA's, snow blowers, and mini steers in the street and blew the snow over our sidewalk, so that when it was cleaned and the city come through, they didn't have enough snow to cover us back up. But I'm sure Waynesboro doesn't have the money in the public works budget to have 25 mini steer, skids running around Waynesboro, blowing snow over it, over the road, over the sidewalks, so.
We can all get excited about hopefully warmer temperatures next week, and hopefully things melt, but, yeah.
Excellent.
That is all I have for you on the annual report.
Excellent. Well, thank you for your work on the annual report. I will note for the record that any grammatical errors in the commissioner chairs section are my responsibility alone. I didn't see any, but, you know.
You didn't use spell check, Will.
What's that?
You didn't use spell check.
I did use spell check. I, you know, was running on. Yeah, well, I mentioned I might happen to have one recently made.
And if we just, I do plan to present the annual report before city council on Monday. So I don't know if this is required, but I think it'd be nice to get a vote to approve the, your annual report, so that then it's the official report that we'll present to council.
All right, so does anybody have a motion?
I made the motion that we approve the annual report, so that it can be presented before city council.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. All right, next up, we have minor subdivisions, excuse me, minor subdivisions and final subdivisions approved since the November 19th, 2024 meeting.
I have quite a few of these for you this evening. It's busy November and December in this regard. So the first one I have for you is 1021 Fry Street. This is tax limits, it's numbers 38-2-4, and this is lots six and seven. And you really can't see it, but it's this lot here and then this lot right here. And so what this plat was doing was just basically dividing each of those lots into two for single-family detached residential. That's just the cover sheet. The second one I have for you this evening is 1001 Shenandoah Village Drive, which is tax amount number 60-1-56, and this is, of course, the Northrop Grumman parcel behind Target. And with this one, they subdivided the parcel into two. So you have the second, the second parcel here, and then you have the main Northrop Grumman parcel. So you have the second, the second parcel here and then you have the main Northrop Grumman parcel right here.
Is there anything planned for the unused parcel?
I think that'll be announced in the future.
For, yeah, for added drama.
The third plat I have for you tonight is the Town Center Drive Apartments parcel. It's two parcels, one fifty P Buckley Moss Drive and then six fifty-one Town Center Drive. And so this was originally two parcels, and so they are re-subdividing it into four parcels. Three commercial parcels along the, I guess it's P Buckley Moss Drive, so they frontage on P Buckley Moss Drive. And then the larger parcel in the rear for the apartments.
Is there any targeted commercial, like a industry type that's coming into those spaces?
We've received a site plan for the corner, this, this lot, which looks to be a convenience store, gas station type use. But that's all we know about at this time.
Another, another gas station. Well, at least it ain't a car wash. We went through a spill where every, every corner was about to get one.
I don't know, there's no gas station on that side of the road.
BP, I mean Exxon.
Is there, is there one, is that a, is there one right there that still sells gas?
But that one's, is that in the county? The Exons in the county.
But, but if you come down there, what's, what's the other one?
No, no, I'm, I was just thinking between there and Stewart Street. I meant between, I was just thinking between there, as you go out of the city that way. Yeah, the lad one's out there anyways.
So the fourth one I have for you is Zero Gun Street. This is tax number members fifty, excuse me, fifty-six dash three, lots one through five. This came before the planning commission a couple of years ago to divide the property into five parcels. Plat came into our office last month to remove those lot, lot lines and just have it be one parcel instead.
Is that in anticipation of residential development that would be better suited by a different?
So, so this was before it came in and was five lots. It was what we call like a paper street subdivision where it had gotten laid out a long time ago, but none of the infrastructure was put in. So I think the owner was interested and hopeful in kind of reconfiguring that, applied to vacate some right-of-way, paid for that right-of-way and thought, you know, kind of putting five large lots. And then I, we've had a lot of interest from people coming in to, to look at possibilities of developing there. I think the, the property has some development challenges and they were unable, they've been unable to sell it. So I think, you know, maybe the hope was that it would be, it would sell better as one parcel.
Can, can you go back a slide so I can see the?
Where exactly is this?
It's this parcel right here.
It's at the end of Gun Street?
Yeah, right at the tail end of Gun Street.
It backs up to the, the big parcel between two fifty and sixty-four that's owned by the Greek family, right? This parcel does.
Well, it could touch that. So if you look to the red star, you can see kind of where it is in relation to the property, the city here.
There's guns. So is that, is that Elkin Drive, Elken Circle?
Yeah, Elken Circles, what wraps around, yeah.
So Guns, Gun Street doesn't exist there, right? It's, it exists down off of Tenth, but up there, it's not Gun Street. I mean, if you built a road there, it would be Gun Street, but it's Gun Street.
It's addressed as.
Yeah, it doesn't exist, yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's, so it's at the end of Eleventh. What's that?
It's a great name for tracking.
So that, the intent for that five lot, five large plot development, well, is it meant for residential development?
It's zoned for residential development. So now they've applied and we've approved to get rid of the five lots and it is just one lot. It is zoned RS seven, RS seven, yes, so. There could be, RS seven is single-family detached only. So that if they wanted to do something different, they would have to apply for a rezoning.
So as of now, what could just possibly be there is just one big house?
Or, yeah, a house with land.
How many acres was it?
It's about five acres or so. Yep, approximately.
Is that on a floodplain?
No, no.
No, it's up on the side of a mountain, I think.
This is the, so there's Air Liquide. So if you turn right on, off of Delphine and go up the hill, it's at the top of the hill there.
So, yeah, we had, we had developers interested in it when it was five lots. There are development challenges. You know, you, you could see a rezoning in the future potentially, if someone wanted to develop it differently than just a single-family house.
If I remember right, there was no right-of-way to that property, right? Or is it?
Yeah, so they would, that, you can see the cul-de-sac there is platted. So they would improve to, well, I mean, I guess if they just did one single-family house, they could run a driveway off of it. But essentially removing the five lots and making one lot at this time, yeah.
All right, so the final one I have for you is two two one Osage Lane. And this is between tax number members thirty-one dash six dash three and thirty-one dash six dash five. So it's parcel here with the building on it and then the parcel back behind it. And what this plat was doing is basically just a lot line adjustment. The owners of this building wanted to expand their parking lot in the, in the back. And in order to be able to do that, they needed to adjust the property line to give them the space to do that, so they can just expand their parking lot. So this was a lot line adjustment plat to give them a little extra land in order to accomplish that. And that is all I have for you this evening.
Last, we have public comment, right, I'm not on the agenda. Seeing no members of the public present, move along. Last, we, yes, unless we need, Mr. Hitchens has more to tell us. And matters from staff?
I do not think I have anything.
And commissioners, correspondence and communication, anybody have anything?
I've got a question on something, the village at Inbryes. What, what is the status on that?
So, other than knowing that it, that it's something that they might be interested in doing to put some kind of multiple units on a property there, we don't have any application.
Okay, so that, that always to be coming forward, I guess, when, when they move forward on it.
So we, the way it's currently zoned, you couldn't put multiple units on that piece of property. So you would see some application to kind of effectuate the goals or interests of that organization. And other than kind of knowing about that peripherally or speaking with them about future plans, we haven't received any applications.
Could that fall into the cottage court type thing?
I think that, yes, the cottage court ordinance would be something they could pursue. Rezone the property to cottage court, or not rezone, because it's a conditional use permit. So apply for a conditional use permit to do cottage court housing. That could be something, and that could be an application we receive. It, it couldn't be done without something like that.
Yeah, okay.
Unless they were just to develop by right along the road and the frontage that they have.
I would like to congratulate Kenny on his historic win as our new mayor. I know you're doing great things for the city and I'm excited to.
As usual, Nigel stole my thunder.
My apologies.
All right, hearing no further correspondence.
Did you, did you announce that Nigel is also the vice chair of the school board?
I did not, Nigel, but please.
Your man is doing things.
I appreciate it.
All right, thank you for correcting that oversight on my part. Any, do we have anything else? All right, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries, we are adjourned.